I'm doing anything yet. There we go. Let's bring to order the regular meeting for February the 3rd, 2025. I have asked Commissioner Williams to please lead us in an invocation and pledge. Start with that. Please rise, remove your caps if you are wearing.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and to do the business of Brunswick County and just ask that you would guide us in what we do. We lift up those men and women in uniform, law enforcement, first responders, veterans who sacrifice themselves and put themselves at risk every day to protect us, and we just ask that you would keep them safe. Lord, I also want to lift up everyone here in Brunswick County who's still dealing with the effects of PTC-8, as well as those in Western North Carolina dealing with Helene, and those on the West Coast dealing with the recent fires, and just ask that you would help the people that are dealing with that, and also help the responders and recovery people that are trying to help them get through that, and just guide them to a positive resolution. Lord, I just lift these things up in your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we move to adjustments and approval of the agenda. I have a change or two to make before I ask the rest of the board. Under Presentations, number two, Code Administration. We have to reschedule that as our recipient of that award was unable to join us, so we will reschedule that to our later on. But in its place, I would like to add a quick presentation where I will make a presentation to the former chairman. So, under Presentations, number two, it's now a presentation to Commissioner Thompson. Are there any other adjustments or changes to the agenda? If not, need a motion to approve with the changes?
Those changes.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Sykes, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We now move into the part of public comments. I believe most of you know the rules, but we will go through them quickly. Our public comment policy. Each speaker may speak for three minutes. Doesn't look like we have so many that we will have to have a group spokesperson. So, please begin by stating your name and address for the minutes of the meeting. All comments shall be civil. No personal attacks, obscenities, derogatory or slanderous remarks or comments regarding any of us up here that will have or will be running for public office. If it gets a little out of hand, I will have the Sergeant of Arms remove you. Speakers should not expect commissioners to engage in a dialogue. That is not what this is for. This is for you to state what is on your mind and for us to listen. So with that, we will start the public excuse me, the public comment time. I have the sheet in front of me. First up, Nancy Cook.
Good afternoon. I'm Nancy Cook. I have resided at 3972 Business 17E in Bolivia. I'm also the mayor of the town of Bolivia, and today I'm speaking in that capacity. A few weeks ago, before the recent air tragedies that have impacted us, Mrs. Linda Silver Bufano reached out to me. Her parents were both killed in the airplane crash of Flight 2511 on January 6, 1960. I know most of us were either very young or not even alive yet, but some of you may have heard stories about it. The crash occurred near the town of Bolivia, and although technically not in our town limits or our ETJ, I was touched by her request and have endeavored to help her. Her wish is for a commemorative historical marker to be placed on Galloway Road near the crash site. It has taken some digging to find the correct agency, but she is now in touch with the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, and is in the process of completing an application with their department. My goal in speaking today is twofold. First, I want to thank those of you who helped us in finding the correct agency. Second, Mrs. Bufano is going to be in Bolivia this week, and she'll be meeting with us at the Bolivia Town Hall on Thursday, February 2nd, excuse me, February 6th at 2:00 PM. I'm cordially inviting the commissioners and anyone else who is interested in attending to learn about this tragic event, or if you have memories that you would like to share with her. Although the official investigation is still open after all these years, it is likely the crash occurred because of a dynamite bomb detonating onboard Flight 2511. Mrs. Bufano is suggesting the historical marker read something like this. This area was the scene of one of the first known bombings of a commercial airliner. We dedicate this to the 29 passengers and five crew members who perished on January 6, 1960 on National Airlines Flight 2511 over Bolivia, North Carolina. If anyone would like to attend, please see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Cook? Do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Ah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is that 2:00 PM at the Town Hall?
2:00 PM at the Town Hall. I'm at 5:00 AM for Cook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up.
All of us received emails about that and shared them with the managers as well.
Next up, Mary Ann Harris.
Nice to see everybody again. Mary Ann Harris, 8735 Southern Homestead Trail, Ash, North Carolina. I'm here here today to advocate for the shade ordinance. Seventy other counties in North Carolina already have shade laws. As we have learned this past summer, having a shade ordinance will prevent dogs from suffering and possibly dying of a heat stroke. We experienced two incidents last summer. One was the husky that suffered for weeks in extreme heat, even though it had a wooden shelter. We also had a dog suffer a heat stroke. Its organs slowly shut down and it died. We now have the facts that prove plastic dog houses, igloos, barrels, and wooden houses reach may reach up to 120 degrees in direct sunlight. The shade ordinance will help educate pet owners and give animal control the power they need to address situations such as these. I hope you will consider making the amendment today. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a tough one. I have no idea what this says. Is this Anita? I have it. That's as much as I could get. Thank you, Anita. Please state your name and address.
My name is Anita August. My address is 590 Boach Trail, Sunset Beach. Each year, the Animal Legal Defense Fund publishes its U.S. State Animal Protection Laws Ranking Report. It is the largest and longest-running and most authoritative of its kind, assessing the strength of each state's animal protection laws. Each year, this organization examines over 3,600 pages of statutes. Each state is ranked based on 20 categories of animal protection. Can you guess where North Carolina stands? Number 35 out of 50. We're number 35. We're even below the median ranking. This is not a statistic to be proud of, nor is it a ranking to be tolerated. We can do better. You have before you today the opportunity to improve conditions right here in Brunswick County. Possibility applauds the extensive work done by Mary Ann Harris, and we ask that you approve the language that she has worked closely with your attorney to develop. Certainly, every one of you can appreciate the importance of providing an animal with shade, just as they need basic food, water, and shelter from the elements. When people accept the responsibility of owning animals, they must also factor in the expense of keeping those animals safely and humanely. People need to choose wisely when adopting animals. Those animals will depend on these people for their very existence. There are several nonprofits who operate in Brunswick County who may be able to help needy citizens who cannot afford a tarp to provide the shade needed. And I know that our own Animal Protective Services helps folks in need too. Please vote in favor of updating our animal protection statute, and let your constituency know that you want to be better than ranking number 35 out of 50 states.
Thank you. Wendy Sharon.
Wendy Sharon, 1771 Candle Ridge Lane, Bolivia. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Shade Ordinance for Dogs. I've been a longtime volunteer at the Brunswick County Animal Shelter, rescuing four dogs myself in the past nine years. A little bit of a crazy dog lady, but absolutely adore dogs. They bring peace to our lives and just enrich our lives greatly. I'm also a member of the Winding River Nonprofit Pause for a Cause on their board. So I speak on behalf of the many volunteers I know at the shelter and friends from Winding River that we would all love to see the shade ordinance approved. Thank you. Love has four paws.
Next up is Carol Bridges.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Bridges. I live at 1798 Urchin Lane, Southeast in Bolivia. I run the Pause for a Cause group in Winding River, where we raise money for shelters as well as things for Brunswick County Animal Shelter and Fix a Friend. Frankly, I cannot believe we are even speaking of needing a shade ordinance. This should be standard in this state, along with year-round protection against all elements. How many dogs lay on ice for hours on end freezing in the winter, much less the snow we've had this year? The heat and intensity of the sun is unbearable, as you well know, when exposed for any length of time. This county and state are supposedly a God-fearing community. The Sheriff's Unit states, "In God, we trust." Do you know how many times God's creatures are listed in the Bible and mentioned in the Bible? Well over 20. God did not intend for the animals of the earth to be neglected and abused. Not caring for them is neglect and abuse. Let's use some common sense here and do what is right. Give these dogs protection from the elements. They cannot speak for themselves. We have to do it for them. They have no control over their lives. We do. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, Bill Easley.
I'm Bill Easley, 3485 Airport Road, Southeast. It's commendable that these ladies are concerned about dogs and dogs being pinned out in the sun. We already have two state laws in effect. One is defining cruelty, and it's the act or omission of neglect whereby justifiable, unjustifiable pain or suffering and death is caused or permitted. Then we have General Statute excuse me there. General Statute 14-361, which says, "If any person shall willfully set a foot or instigate or move to carry on, promote, or engage, or do any acts towards the furtherance of an act of cruelty to an animal, shall be guilty of a Class 1 misdemeanor." We already have this situation covered. All it takes is, if there is this situation, for the person to be reported, and Animal Control go out and do their job. Adding tarps or shades and this, that, and the other, you're going to get into how many square inches of coverage you need for a certain dog of a certain size, how high up in the air it is. It's just going to be a quagmire all the way around. Anybody that's abusing a dog like this should have the dog removed, and there's a case for doing that. You go to the magistrate, or the Animal Control goes to the magistrate, and they can go and remove the dog. It shouldn't be a matter of somebody out there and having a dog in this situation, and then let's see what we can do to, so they can keep that dog. That dog more than likely is also the dog that's not getting water or food. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. And that concludes the public comment section of our agenda for today. Moving on, approval of the consent agenda. Second, Commissioner Thompson, second Commissioner Cook. Any discussion at all from anybody? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, let's move to presentation. Okay. Our clerk? Are you presenting this?
I am not presenting it, sir, but Greer Templar from your WMPO was here, and she'll come forward and make that presentation.
Well, come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you so much for your time today. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about this study. Sounds great. All right. Well, once again, my name is Greer Templar, and I am the Senior Transportation Planner for the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as the WMPO, and today I'm going to be going over the Gulligichi Heritage Trail feasibility study. So kind of the beginning stages of what works, some of the catalysts of this plan, all the way to the final recommendations. So just to begin, the Gulligichi Heritage Corridor was designated by Congress in 2006, and this designation was the catalyst for this was basically to preserve the historic and cultural contributions of the Gulligichi people. And so typically, this corridor is about 30 miles from coast inland, and it goes from about Jacksonville, Florida to Jacksonville, North Carolina. And it has a large regional significance in our area. So in Brunswick County alone, it is home to many important heritage sites, just to name a few. Reeve's Chapel, many cemeteries, a couple of parks, and the river itself. So while the greater Wilmington region as a whole has a lot of connection to the Gulligichi people, Brunswick County in particular has a lot of landmarks that there is a desire to not only preserve, but to show the public and provide an educational opportunity. And some of the catalysts to the development of this study specifically, the Brunswick River, the Brunswick Heritage Riverside Ride, which kicked off in 2021. This is something that the WMPO works with multiple municipalities and counties, including Brunswick County, every year. And we ride from Phoenix Park in Navassa down to Belleville's Riverwalk Park and back, just to kind of showcase the corridor in our region. And another big catalyst for this plan was the adoption of Navassa's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan in 2022. So really, the beginning stages of firming up not only the desire to have more multimodal facilities in the area, but also with the cross ties of providing that avenue to not only recreate, get around, but to kind of have that linkage between those historic sites. On top of that, the Brunswick County NAACP came forward with a Greenway/Blue Way Trail Proposal, and the big kickoff point was in fiscal, or I'm sorry, in calendar year 2022. NCDOT, North Carolina Department of Transportation's Integrated Mobility Division, released a Paved Trails and Sidewalks Feasibility Study Grant Program. So this provided the WMPO and our member jurisdictions with the opportunity to obtain funding to move forward with a study. And thankfully, we were awarded. So we applied for and awarded the grant through IMD, and we worked in partnership with our local organizations to get this plan developed. So that includes the WMPO, the town of Leland, the town of Belleville, the town of Navassa, and Brunswick County. On top of our partnership with NCDOT and our member jurisdictions, the Project Steering Committee also included Gulligichi historians from the region, as well as local cyclist interest group to kind of capture both the historic preservation side of this, as well as the transportation side. And so the large objectives of this feasibility study were to assess the feasibility of a trail through the portion of Brunswick County that the WMPO serves, as well as providing a preferred alignment for the trail that could be moved forward into the design phase, and also looking to identify some applicable funding sources to help move this plan forward when implementation was decided to be obtained by the respective jurisdictions. And so just to briefly go over the project schedule and goals. So the project kicked off in June of 2023 with our first project kickoff meeting, and then we moved into steering committee meetings. Public engagement phase one was late summer, early fall of 2023. Then we delved into the work of looking at alternative development and assessments. Then we moved back into public engagement round two in spring of 2024, where we asked some more details from the public as to what kind of amenities they would like to see, what their preferred alignments may look like. And then finally, we moved into project recommendations and implementation in summer of 2024. And so the goals of this project, just at a high level, to establish a vision for the trail, to preserve and enhance the cultural and history contributions in this region, support public health and safety, and encourage economic development along the corridor, just to name a few. And so we have some preliminary alignments, and again, this is going to run a little bit beyond. I had talked about the Brunswick Riverside, the Brunswick Heritage Riverside Ride. So this also would encourage the beginning point of the trail to be at Phoenix Park, but to go all the way down to Brunswick Nature Park. So connecting those, I believe it passes through three town limits, as well as parts of unincorporated Brunswick County. So this would provide an opportunity to be a big linkage between these communities on the Cape Fear side of Brunswick County. And so the corridor typically follows some major roadways, including Cedar Hill Road, Navassa Road, Village Road, and River Road, NC 133. And for the purpose of developing alternatives and getting public input, the alignment was split into nine segments, and we're going to go into a little bit more detail of what those nine segments look like with some input from the public. To talk about community engagement, again, we did two phases of this. At the beginning stages, we received 370 completed surveys, 120-plus in-person conversations, as well as 333 map comments. Round two, we had about 137 completed surveys, 90-plus in-person conversations, and we had people vote on amenities at that time during round two of engagement. And so phase one largely broke up into being the data gathering portion of this plan development, whereas phase two was really getting the details of what people would like to see this trail to have. With, four events were conducted through each phase. So we did a pop-up event in Brunswick County. We did an open house meeting in Navassa, a pop-up event in Belleville, and an open house meeting in Leland. And really, we were just kind of flexing to what events, what style of event works best for certain communities, and kind of augmented there to make sure that we were able to get the most turnout when we were out and making sure that we were talking to people as much as we could. We also included online tools. That's one of the ways that we were able to collect map comments, and we provided the survey online as well. And just a couple of pictures of the public engagement we did. This kind of shows the different styles of meetings. So Navassa was more of a formal Town Hall. Same with Leland, whereas in Belleville, we went out to the Riverwalk Park during an event to make sure that we were connecting with people there. And so of course, there are human environmental features in the area. We've attested to the multiple Gulligichi sites, but there's also developing land use, some existing parks and trails and schools, Blue Ways, boat launches, in-progress transportation projects, utility easements. The utility easement parallel to the corridor along the 133 area, as well as wetlands and environmental features. So we wanted to make sure that we were also capturing these during the development of the plan. And so when we got into narrowing down the alignment, we had basically two different options for each of those nine segments. So Alignment A typically was occurring within the existing road right-of-way, while Alignment B was really those kind of new paths off-beaten, different options away from the existing roads. And when we went for phase two of public engagement, we offered the ability to kind of mix and match. So each of the nine had two, and the public were able to provide input on which of the two for each they found to be the most beneficial or what they were most excited about. And that's what we took into account and moved forward. A part of this is also the environmental feasibility of our area. We are a very dynamic coastal region, so being mindful of what environmental characteristics are around here. Prior to the alternatives being brought forward, a high-level screening to identify sensitive areas was already undertaken to ensure that anything that we brought forward has that layer of feasibility. So we made sure that, to identify any areas under state, federal, or local regulatory compliance, natural and conservation areas, historic properties, and contaminated sites. And so on this map here, you'll see the preferred alignment. Again, people were able to kind of mix and match between Option A and Option B. As you can see, in some locations, Option A was picked. For instance, Segment 1 in Navassa, you can see that's a little bit more along the riverside, so the more scenic route, and then some of them, such as Segments 7 and 8 are along 133. So a little bit of mix and matching.
Can I ask you a question about the southern part of that, where it kind of suddenly loops back to the west? Is that going up Mallory Creek Drive, or where is that?
Yes, and it would connect with the utility easement corridor. And so although there are preferred alignments that were identified, the trail segments that were not selected as preferred will still be retained in this plan to be longer-range projects. So there, it's not nailing you in necessarily to have to, you know, this is a recommendation, this is what the public said, but there's also the option to see those other projects that were listed as non-preferred and those to still be existing of desire to move forward. And so here are some of the typical cross-sections. I'm going to quickly kind of go over what these may look like. So as you can see, Navassa, this would be the Sturgeon Creek area with a new bridge, and then Leland, that would be right under the US 7476 overpass near the Diverging Diamond. In Belleville, you can kind of see along, this would be along the NC 133 corridor. So that combination between the existing roadway, as well as that off-beaten path a little bit more. We did hear from the public that a big desire was to have at least six feet of a vegetative buffer of some kind between the facility itself and the roadway to kind of provide a little bit more safety. And you can see that represented in the Belleville photo. And then on the bottom right would be the utility easement corridor, so showing what that may look like in a mock-up.
I may be getting in the weeds, but in the Belleville area, you've got the Riverwalk on one side, but then you've got their new multi-use path on the other side. Which side would it be?
This would be an extension of their multi-use path. Yes. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
No.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Frank and I are both on the WMPO, so we're very familiar with that.
Yes, sir. So I will just, this is a breakdown of each of those individual corridors. I will just quickly breeze through this. The significance of Section 1 is a linkage to Reeve Chapel, so providing that connection between the transportation aspects of the project, as well as the historical connection. I'm going to keep on moving through. So here you can see, this would be going under 140, so showing what that path would look like going under the freeway section. Again, this would be the section going over Sturgeon Creek. I apologize. This is the Sturgeon Creek crossing. So you can see north of Sturgeon Creek, there is going to be parts along the way that would require a little bit more bridge facilities. You can see the Sturgeon Creek crossing here with the recommendation of an off, off-of-the-roadway multi-use path capable bridge. This is what it would look like in the more suburban areas, where there's already some existing facilities that could be improved upon. For instance, thinking about Village Road area. This is again going under the Diverging Diamond, crossing from Leland into Belleville. And then here's where we're getting more into the NC 133 side of things. So again, this is the cross-section photo that you saw for Belleville previously. Again, another one off of 133, and then ending with the utility easement. And so just to preference again, some of the amenities that were asked of people when we went back for public engagement phase two. What we heard were the desire to have expanding parking and signage at Phoenix Park and Brunswick Nature Park trailhead. So with those being the beginning and end of the trail, to kind of have that extra signage present. They would also like to see some trailhead signage at Davis Creek Park, as well as the Belleville Riverwalk Park, some wayfinding and historical markers to see those Gulligichi cultural sites, public art, exercise stations, and trash and recycling at trailheads. And so here are the cost estimations for each segment. As you can see, the cost varies, the length varies, and those kind of tie together to, for instance, looking at Segment 9, it's a longer corridor. It's the utility easement, so it's got a higher price tag than some of these smaller segments that are under a mile. And these are in $20.24. And so we have implementation phasing. So although they're identified as 1 through 9, that's really just working north to south. So So this is not something that would have to be done in one, two, three, four. It would really be a matter of each jurisdiction's ability to get certain projects done. So just thinking about the feasibility of getting things implemented. We have our short-term projects, which would be segment one, Phoenix Park to I one forty, segment five, Navassa Road to Village Road at Baldwin Drive, segment seven, that would be west of River Road from Blackwell to the southern limits of Belleville through town limit. So that would be again one thirty-three. And then medium term, those would be about six to fourteen years. And this may be higher right-of-way cost, a little bit more environmental feasibility study that needs to go into this to get the project on the ground. So those medium-term projects are seven, sorry, segment two, going under one forty, segment three from one forty to Old Mill Road, and segment six at the US seventeen interchange. And then the longest-term projects, fifteen years plus, would be a new bridge at Sturgeon Creek, the west side of River Road from Belleville to Mallory Creek, and then that utility easement corridor for segment nine. And so just to list off our key implementation partners, of course, this is not everybody, but the big people we would like to thank for their involvement in this would be NCDOT, the towns of Navassa, Belleville, and Leland, Brunswick County, the National Park Service, as well as some local developers. And moving forward, a part of this project was to look forward at potential funding sources. So some work was done to identify potential funding sources that could help further along the construction of these projects. So for instance, the WMPO's Surface Transportation Block Grant Program federally. There's a couple of different projects, the Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program statewide, NCDOT's STI, as well as funds from the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, Powell Bill, just to name a few locally, TIFs, partnerships, developer contributions when an adopted plan is in place. And of course, there are always private and nonprofit opportunities as well. Corporate giving is a big thing, so tip some corporations would like, thinking of the Carolina Thread Trail, this may be aligned with what they're looking to do, or like Blue Cross Blue Shield's Healthy Places Grant. So looking to get people active and out and about and using active transportation. And so the next steps are, the WMPO adopted this feasibility study on November twentieth. We're going around and doing our tour de Gullah Geechee to talk to our partners who we've worked with on this plan. And then following that, supporting adoption of the plan locally. And then moving on from there, individual trail segments would be advanced into further project development as funding is secured. And thank you very much. That's all I have for today, and I am happy to answer any questions.
I guess from us, at some point, you'd be looking for us to adopt the plan. That doesn't come with any financial obligation on the county's part. We're simply endorsing the plan.
Correct. That would be more so to encourage future implementation. But no, there, we would not, you know, of course, the WMPO would not be requesting funds for this. This would be to benefit moving the plan forward from within your organization.
And again, getting into the weeds, the STI DOT portion of this, I'm assuming that would all be under the bike bed.
Correct. Potentially thinking about complete streets. So if there were a larger project going on, for instance, thinking about what happened at the beginning of River Road in Leland, a multi-use path was put in place as well as the roadway improvement. So a little bit of creativity, but certainly could have a couple of different avenues.
And I know there are long-term projects to widen one thirty-three. Could this be tied into those as well?
Potentially, I think the environmental considerations would be a part of that and the support of the organization to kind of really get that moving forward.
Randy?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Marty?
I'm good. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Truly an honor, but it is also an honor to be selected to lead the group by your peers. And so I'm truly appreciative for that. And I'm appreciative for what Brunswick County has been able to do over the years. Government doesn't move real fast, but we are, we are, we are proficient when, when.
Has our computer's gone back down?
Blame Leanne. She's not even. Are we offline again? Oh, we're off.
Technology.
Small fortune that we spent for all this. Curry, I'm not blaming you. You had nothing to do with it. All right. Moving on, utilities, the lead and copper. Why is nobody standing there as I'm reading? John Nichols is going to talk to us about the lead and copper program.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And so when we were at a workshop a couple of weeks ago, we mentioned that we had some information for you on our lead and copper program. And so one of the key things that I would like you to get from this presentation that we have for you is that we've been deemed a no-lead system. And that's really the best situation for Brunswick County and the people that are served by our water system. And so I'm going to turn this presentation over to Alyssa Olmsted. She's been working very hard on this and is part of the reason why we were able to get that positive certification from DEQ. Alyssa is our Water Quality Program Manager. So she's going to go through some details of the lead and copper program, but also talk about some of the public outreach that we have coming up with our website. So I'll turn it over to Alyssa.
Thank you very much, John. Good afternoon, Commissioners. There we go. Okay. So as John said, I am a Water Quality Program Manager over Lead and Copper. So I just wanted to real quickly give you a history of our Lead and Copper Rule. This was initiated in nineteen ninety-one under the EPA. It was implemented as the LCR as part of the Safe Drinking Water Act. And its goals at that time were just to improve public health by reducing lead and copper in drinking water. It established action levels within the system of fifteen micrograms per liter. It implemented corrosion control treatments in water systems federally, and it started the idea of lead service line replacements. By two thousand, we had started the minor revisions, which just updated some of the language in the nineteen ninety-one rule, introduced the ninetieth percentile in sampling, which just meant that an individual sample couldn't fail the entire water system for a lead action level exceedance. And by two thousand and twenty-one, we were really involved in the Lead and Copper Rule revisions known as the LCRR. That initiated our service line inventory, where every water system in the country had to create an inventory by October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, of all of their service lines by address, including the material type on both the customer side and the public utility side. It also had some other changes, including increased sampling for schools, had some language for public outreach, and started the action level exceedance revisions, including a trigger level. In two thousand and twenty-four, the Lead and Copper Rule Improvements, LCRI, was passed in October, and it went into effect December thirtieth. Now that being said, a lot of the changes are given us three years from the date it was promulgated in the Federal Register. So most of the changes go into effect in two thousand and twenty-seven, but this is the newest iteration of the rule. Mainly, it removes system trigger levels and lowers our action exceedance levels to ten micrograms per liter. It includes connectors in the inventories, and it updates some sampling requirements. Whereas previously, we had sixty samples every three years, we now have to have a hundred samples every six months. It also updated some language in our public education materials. So what is lead? It's a naturally occurring metal in the environment, and historically, it was used in some plumbing materials and fixtures across the United States. As we know from other lead exposures, it can cause serious health risks, including decreased IQ, learning disabilities, behavioral problems in children. It can cause pregnancy complications and miscarriage or preterm birth. And in adults, it leads to heart disease, high blood pressure, and nervous system issues. You cannot remove your lead from your drinking water by boiling it, which is a common misconception. The best practice is to flush your water about a minute with hot water before use and to utilize a filtration system such as a carbon-activated water pitcher. The only one hundred percent way to ensure that you have no lead in your drinking water is to have zero lead lines. So it's a little background for this process. A service line is the water line that goes from the water main up to and through the water meter and then to the interior plumbing in the house. When we refer to utility-side plumbing, it includes the water main and into the water meter. The customer side is the line past the water meter to the interior plumbing. The EPA does not regulate internal plumbing structures, so it is just up to the point of the foundation at the house. We don't usually have crawl spaces in North Carolina. These are commonly made from plastics such as PVC, CTS, PEX. It can be copper material, galvanized iron, or lead piping. And a connector is usually a flexible piece of material less than three foot in length, typically found either at the water main or at the house structure. And it simply services a joint between the service line and the main or the house. Or it could be in the middle of the line. It's not common. Connectors are not frequently found in North Carolina. So some methodology for our inventory. We had a pretty substantial review of historic records before we started our process. This included as-built property records, system contracts, and tap installation cards. And we reviewed for construction date and plumbing installation. Because there was a federal lead ban in nineteen eighty-six, we determined everything built in nineteen eighty-seven or later would automatically be non-led. We gave ourselves a buffer just in case there were any lead materials still on the plumbing trucks or in contracts. Afterwards, we did physical verification. This was a mixture of manual and hydroexcavations. So manual excavations was usually done in the process of just our regular operations. If it were a meter changeout or a service call, any reason, a tap installation, we were there. We would take a shovel and manually excavate. We also had a subcontractor that we did hydroexcavations with, and they used basically a pressure jet and excavated the material at the service line, following NCDQ guidelines. This was eighteen inches on either side of the water meter. You had to expose the line. We then took a picture. As you can see in the presentation, the water meter is the pit in the middle with the cover off of it. And then you have plastic CTS material on the public side and PVC plastic on the customer side. We would upload these into our inventory, and then we would cover the material backup. We were able to do seven hundred and twenty-two public inspections and four hundred and seventy-five private inspections. Following this, we ran a statistical methodology approved by NCDQ with a ninety-five percent confidence interval that said we are less than one percent likely to have lead lines anywhere in our system. As a result, we are designated a non-lead system by NCDQ. It does not mean that we are guaranteed to have no lead in our system. It just means it is statistically unlikely to find a lead line. To date, we have not found an entire lead line in our system at all. It also does not mean that you will have lead-free drinking water. You can still have exposure from interior plumbing or from chrome-plated faucets. So there's a chance that your water could have a lead action exceedance level for an individual household. We have found galvanized iron lines in the system, but due to being a non-lead designation, we do not have to replace these per EPA. However, it is going to be our process to go ahead and replace any galvanized lines as they could have lead solder in them, but it's statistically unlikely. Following this, we have created a public-facing webpage that is set to go live soon. And this is for the community to understand what their individual lead lines are. It has access to a lead service line material survey as well as our service lines by the numbers, which is a screenshot of an example at the bottom. That is a running tally. So as we have new connections, we'll be updating these monthly as we get information from our billing department, as we build new lines, as people move into old homes. These are live action counts. And we also have links to a survey. Or, I'm sorry, we also have the public inventory map where you can go online and see every individual house serviced by Brunswick County Public Utilities in the system. The yellow lines are highlighted as galvanized. Again, they don't require replacement, but we just want to highlight them because those are the homes we are going to target for replacement, particularly on the utility side. If it is a solid blue dot, it is determined non-led by physical analysis. And if it has a black dot in the middle, it's by statistical analysis. You can search your home by individual address. We have an example on the right. That's just the public utilities address on Graywater Road. You type it in and you can click your address, and it determines both the utility and the customer side by material type what you have. If you think that it's wrong or you have more updated information, we have a public survey that you can fill out. It does require you have your name, your contact information, and the property address. And you do have to submit a photograph of your service line material. This will go to our staff for further verification, and it will update our public inventory. The next steps with this program is we're going to continue updating our service line inventory. As I said, we're going to do monthly updates from billing as we get new homes connected. And again, anything after nineteen eighty-seven is automatically non-led. We do have an annual inventory submission up until two thousand and twenty-seven where we have to submit a new baseline inventory, and that will include any and all connectors that we may have in Brunswick County, which are not common, but they do exist, particularly in older areas like Southport. We will have increased sampling of homes with galvanized and copper lines. This starts in two thousand and twenty-eight where we have six-month sampling periods of a hundred samples versus our sixty samples every three years under the LCRR. We're going to begin water sampling of all schools and childcare facilities, which is in conjunction with the EPA three-T rule. That begins in two thousand and twenty-eight as well, and we'll have the annual inventory submission every year thereafter. Further, we have physical verification of all lines in the system that were installed before nineteen eighty-seven. So regardless of our statistical analysis, we have ten years to lay eyes on those lines to ensure that there was nothing missed. Thank you. And any questions this time?
Well, I'm excited that we don't have any.
Me too.
Very excited. So I appreciate the presentation. You've done an excellent job on it. I think it's great. So I'm excited.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, while, you know, the best possible outcome came from this study, there's still work that has to be done. As Alyssa mentioned, we've got, you know, over the years, we'll have to do a lot of work. Thank you.
Marty?
Marty?
Right, no. I remember when I was a kid, this, we had PVC. Everybody was running around, you know, using PVC things to hit, hitting each other with or use sword fights or whatever like that. So I'm wondering how far back were lead pipes used because not in my lifetime have I seen them employed in the building trade, but then again, I, I could have missed something. It was usually copper and PVC.
Right. In Brunswick County, it was never historical practice to use lead lines. Um, we do believe in Southport at the turn of the century or the eighteen hundreds. It was common to, not even common down here. It was possible to use, but lead lines were more common in areas in the northeast.
You're talking about early nineteen hundreds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other thing is, I think we have to be very vigilant in so much as there are things out there that aren't even on the radar screen, like, you know, PFAS. There was no way even testing. There was only a place in uh uh Colorado and in Canada, they could even detect it. And so we don't know. I mean, we're running everything from microplastics to who knows what else is out there that we're having to continue. And I appreciate the fine job that the EPA has done in not informing us of these things. Then loving different levels of saying everything's fine and then all of a sudden the sky's going to fall. So I think we always have to be vigilant. Try to be ahead of the curve. So thanks for all you guys are doing. Really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, got anything?
I'm good.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
All right. It's our presentations. We go on to our, our administrative report. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. As you are aware, um, Ms. Mary Ann Harris has spoken several times to the board regarding shade rules. I've uh worked closely with the attorney for the sheriff's office regarding the animal control ordinance. We do feel the current ordinance can address the situation as there's a specific requirement that all animals be provided proper and adequate shelter for the weather at all times. However, uh, we were still requested to draft an amendment to take away some of the uh officer discretion, I guess is the better word, to have a more formal shade requirement in the ordinance. The language we've drafted working with the sheriff's office adds in the same section of general requirements, shade, that during the summer season, animals must be provided access to a shaded area other than its primary shelter. And the sheriff's office has stated that if the board were to consider an amendment that it would uh accept that amendment.
Any comments? Or emotion?
I noticed we've got some folks from the sheriff's office here and so not to put them on the spot, but I'm gonna put them on the spot and see if they want to share any insights on whether or not they not whether or not it's acceptable, but whether or not it's needed.
Well, this feels like a hot seat all of a sudden. Thanks for allowing me to step up and to speak on behalf of my, my coworkers and my animal services team. Uh, we do feel confident that the state laws and the ordinances that we have in place right now um, protect the animals of our county. Uh, so we do not feel as if an am- an amendment is needed to serve that purpose. Um, we put a lot of pride in getting out to the community and educating them and providing them with resources in the event that they need it.
Any questions for our deputy? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody like to proceed?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we um not adopt this change.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I've got to come in. Okay. If you're gonna open the floor. Um, you know, some uh some forty years ago, uh, as a, as a patrol officer, uh, I used to like to stop a lot of cars. And uh, my supervisor came to me and told me if you stop another car, you better, you better have a ticket in your hand whenever you come back. And so it took every bit of officer discretion away from me. And over the forty years that I went through, uh, officer discretion in making sure that your officers are properly trained is a huge thing. Um, and you know, I have no doubt that, you know, I have a, uh, I have a companion animal that is, uh, that was adopted. Uh, and uh, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm very fond of, of animals. Um, and very, you know, it's close to the heart. But, but taking away and directing uh, officer discretion is huge, uh, no matter what it is wi- within our county, whether it deals with um, people on patrol or people dealing with, uh, dealing with, with our animals across the county. The officer needs to have discretion and the officer needs to be trained properly to understand the importance of having that discretion. I feel like uh everyone that I have come into contact with with our sheriff's office and our local law enforcement are, are very well trained. Uh, and I know that because of the uh, attention that has been placed on this particular issue uh with animals, I know that our sheriff's office is particularly aware of what needs to happen if, uh, if an incident occurs. Um, I also know that our sheriff's office is uh uh, understandably uh grateful for public comment and public participation. So I know that our sheriff's office has an open door to hear from residents that are concerned, not only about animal protection, but about a series uh, uh, of different items that deal with public safety, animal welfare, citizen welfare. Um, and so I think, I think our sheriff's office is doing uh, because I have not heard anything different from that, that they're doing everything that they should be doing to afford their officers with, with the advanced training to be able to identify an issue when it surfaces. And so I, I too think that uh with, with the current uh laws that are in place, and I was not aware that there were additional laws that uh were in place that uh allowed the sheriff's office to enforce general statutes uh, dealing with uh, uh cruelty to animals. I've always heard about it. But uh, but actually having the actual uh general statute, I think, goes a long way. So that's, I just wanted to share that comment.
I'd like to just say, first of all, those were excellent comments and insightful from somebody who's been in the capacity as a law enforcement officer, and that's a perspective that's important. The reason that I seconded the motion is I don't think we need to pass an ordinance to do something that law already does. I mean, there are lots of laws on the books in Washington and Raleigh and everywhere else that don't need to be there and they were passed because somebody passed them just because they thought it was a popular thing to do and that's not the right reason to do it. And secondly, we, you know, we all up here will hear people call us with things and they will bend their ear on something and they are very convincing. And then we hear the other side of the story. And that's why the officers need the discretion to go in and research it and, you know, not be handcuffed, to use a pun, but be able to go in and do their job. And I feel like our sheriff's office certainly does that.
Um, I'll take it and then I'll move, move it right down the line. I am also opposed to making this change and I'll tell you why. In my lifetime, I am a sixty-nine-year-old man. I have owned five dogs. All five of them were rescued. Never bought a pedigree dog. Um, they've lived long, healthy lives as, as far as dog years go. I don't want anybody coming to my house and telling me I am a responsible adult. I have taken real good care of my dogs. I am a dog guy. Um, I cannot regulate people, no matter how many laws we pass. You can't regulate somebody to do the right thing. It's just never gonna happen. So I, I am opposed to making this text change. Um, I have spoken to the sheriff. I have a great relationship with Sheriff Chisholm. We have gone out for coffee a handful of times and this has certainly come up. He feels he has every single tool necessary in his toolbox to enforce whatever needs to be enforced. I'm not going to add to that. Uh, it's a tough job to begin with. So I, I also uh am, am not in favor of changing this text amendment. If we did a new text amendment, every time somebody asked us to, we'd be doing five a month. And I'm not about to start doing that. Uh, I believe in smaller government. The tools are there, let them use them.
Well, I agree with all the other commissioners' comments. Um, we all love our animals. Uh, I think all of us have had animals uh for a long time. Of course, I don't have any now. But however, um, you know, you can make as many laws as you want. But people are going to still do what they want to do. So the main thing is our law enforcement are protecting the animals to the best of their ability on the laws. And if they see something or if something's reported, I'm sure that they will follow the law to handle the situation. So uh that's, I think it's, it's not needed, so.
Marty?
I have a chocolate lab at home and I swear he can speak English or I can understand it. We took him on a wedding. We went up to a wedding up in Charlotte, uh, actually Statesville over the weekend. That dog, I think he, he understands hand signals. He understands everything. And we've adopted dogs, several of them from the animal control. And David, you and I worked on handing off the animal control facility from the health department to law enforcement some, good gosh, ten, fifteen years ago. And they have done a remarkable job with it. Um, a lot of the senior uh officers have been working in the K nine field in the past. I've talked with them. I, I, you know, I said, do you have what you need? They said, yes. And I've talked to the county attorney. I've talked to other people about it involved in it and they said, embedded in the laws and embedded in the ordinances, we have every mechanism we need to take care of a situation that gets out of hand. Animal cruelty. And they look at it in great detail. Uh, you know, the thing about it is if they didn't, if they didn't have that aspect, then I would say, well, maybe we do need to do it, but every, every determinant has come back and has said, no. What we have does work. The reason why you have a lot of discretion as uh, you know, Commissioner Thompson was talking about is the thing is as I was talking to some of the folks, he said, a lot of times it's education. People don't know that they're doing something wrong. You don't know what you don't know. And they go out there a lot of times and say, look, you need to really do something about this animal. And they sometimes really go to bat showing them how you do it. And they come back and check on them to do it. Now, I'm not saying everything's perfect. I'm not saying that things don't fall the cracks. And there's our people that are irresponsible when it comes to their, to their uh animals. But you know, if we felt like that there was something that was a serious gap, I know the people in the room back there, I know them. And I know that they would say it's not working. I know the county attorney. I know all the people that are involved in it. I've been involved in it through the years. The point being is if it didn't work, I know them well enough to know that they would have come to us and said, we need help. We need some other component. You're right. We need to do it. And people are passionate about it, but the thing is we are too, even though you may not see it as visibly, but we are dog lovers. This man over here, Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams sends me pictures all the time of his cat. And uh, I think he's got a watch cat is what he's got. But anyway, I get it. And so I too joined the other commissioners in saying, no, we don't need an additional. It's not that we don't care. It's not that we're not concerned, but we think the mechanism is there to be to take care of the situation should it arise.
I learned very quickly that that cat outranks me in our house.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to not uh, change the text amendment. All those in favor of leaving it as is, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on, sheriff's office. Uh, design build. Who's come? Okay. Elizabeth, you're making this presentation? Thank you.
Thank ma'am.
Good afternoon. Um, our action item today is to request the Board of Commissioners approve the design build method for the sheriff's office animal protective services project that's in the county C I P. If approved, this step will simply allow for the R F Q to be published. And then we'll be able to see what types of proposals are presented uh for this potential project and present same to you. Um, as part of that facility and, and uh as a refresher, um, because y'all have seen a lot of these stats and figures before. Uh, we put together this quick uh A P S facility fact sheet just to kind of reinforce some of the key items for this project and the reason why it's on the county C I P. Uh, the first fact is that this uh existing building that's our current property, the county property, opened twenty-four years ago, actually at the end of January. So it just had its birthday. Um, and it had an estimated life of fifteen years. So um, uh, so it's, it's past that end of life there. Um, from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four, the volume of animal care has more than doubled. And this volume um increase is due to the live release rate uh going from twenty-seven percent in twenty twelve to eighty-five percent in twenty twenty-four. And then final fact, uh, per North Carolina statutes, uh, we must hold any animals received for at least seventy-two hours. Uh, but county ordinances have different metrics that are in addition to that seventy-two hours that we can answer if need be. Uh, but just for uh when we run our numbers and look at things, the average length of stay for an animal at our shelter is thirteen days. So when you think about that volume and that mouth time and that, you know, having to add up all of that space and resources and having to keep that all clean and safe for um, all of the animals and all of the people and all of our visitors and all of our volunteers. So uh, again, the action item tonight is just to uh request the design build method to allow us to publish the R F Q and see uh what kind of proposals we'll get. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. We have Belinda here to answer any questions you have. And that's about it.
Deputy, did you have anything you wanted to add for we?
Yeah, um, I definitely want to first and foremost say thank you to all of you um, from our last presentation to this one. Um, we understand that the magnitude of this project um is a lot to request. Um, but if we're paying special attention to the live release rates um, and the amount of animals that we're housing on a regular basis, I think we have to consider that longevity wise. Um, our shelter outside of medical buildings and some other key exceptions is the only twenty-four hour operating building within our county. Um, and it is a constant pressure cane. Um, there are living souls in this building, um, regardless if they are there for short term or long, long term. Um, so we would just ask that you consider that um in your decision-making today.
Okay, we, we'll start with Marty. Go this way.
Put me on the spot here.
Yeah, that was the intent. Maybe cut you short.
Well, I, you know, I agree that we need to do something. I don't know to the what extent. I mean, I'm hopeful that we'll come back with a model that'll kind of be a compromise. The problem I'm running into is that every time we turn around, if we blink, it doubles. It's not this project. It's anything we do. If we do the Ash Senior Center, we do anything, it doubles in cost. So the thing about it is if you do it sooner than later, potentially, my hope is it'll save us money. Because if we sit on it, then you're gonna turn around and you're gonna say, well, yeah, that was cool, but now it's like thirty or fifty percent now more than it was before. So, and I'm also of the belief that whenever we do it, you do it right instead of um incrementally, and then it costs a fortune to do it. And you come back and say, well, we had to tear out this because we should have planned for this. This county is growing exponentially, so we have to factor all these things in. I'm sure that it could be said that, well, people don't have animals or anything else like that. I have seen I have seen the other extreme. And where I res- where I came from, I, I saw the animal control, if you will, at the airport in my hometown and it's just, it was it was deplorable to see. And I was a kid and to see what they did and what happened and everything else. You guys have done an exemplary job and we need to continue that aspect as we continue on. I don't know about what the cost is. My hope is that with the RFQs, we'll be able to come with a better determination regarding it. And that's all I've got. And that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Question, one question. Who decided the live release rate?
So it wasn't decided? We come up with that number based on intakes and outcomes?
Well, then, basically, according to what our shelter ordinance is, is we're supposed to just keep them five days? Or is it seven days? So with that said, that's telling me it's a shelter, it's not an adoption center. So by state law, we're supposed to have a shelter. And here we are, creating an adoption center to save more animals. Now, my personal opinion is, each of us is responsible for our animals. And the bigger you get, it's like having a baby. When you have a baby, the expense continues to go up, up, up and up. So that means you're going to get more animals and try to get bigger. So first, I hope all of you bear with me. Most of you should know by now that I'm very conservative in my views of government. I am against too much government and I hate wasting money on issues that are not government requirement. I'm extremely disappointed in the idea of an animal adoption center that will become a government office, department or agency that will cost the citizens, whether it's one million or seven million. I am not opposed to supporting and protecting animals. Animal shelters serve a critical purpose in protecting and caring for the animals in need. But it's a temporary home. It's not, it's for abandoned, abused stray animals and providing them food and shelter and medical attention. Animal shelters are to help control animal populations and prevent animal cruelty and abuse. The animal shelter needs to be moved back to the Health Department. But according to the study that was done, the current shelter has two hundred and seventy-three housing spaces. The new space will add a hundred and four. The county currently provides an average length of stay, which you say here is thirteen days. But in that report that was presented early was twenty-two point seven days. That is well above the county's requirement. With every new addition, you will have electricity, maintenance, more personnel, food, more veterinarian care, which the price of veterinarian care continues to go up. Not included in the construction is telephone, data installation, security, video cameras, furniture, special fire suppression systems. In the presentation, the existing shelter could be updated. What does that mean? You're going to update that after you build a new section? I didn't know where y'all were going with that. But the thing is, there's many of nonprofits out there. We have six or seven in the county. Just like today, we had pausability for calls. All of these places are trying to get people to adopt animals. It's time that we put children and the citizens ahead of housing for animals. Our Brunswick County Board of Education will be coming to us for a bond. That bond can be anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred million. Because that's what's needed to build school systems for our students. The parks in Brunswick County need to be updated. There's a lot of people who'd love to see a sport complex because all their kids are playing travel ball because they cannot. I don't know if your child is playing travel ball, but there's not enough sports. The kids that try out at school, there's only a few that can be on a school team. So most of them are playing travel sports. So the parks are way too small. We need an agricultural center. The Lockwood Folly Park needs to be revented. Bathrooms don't even work. Rent-a-johns have to be used when there's an event there. They have to pay for rent-a-johns. Excuse me. The multipurpose fields have no bathrooms, which causes children, teens, adults to go through traffic to get to the bathroom. I know that parks and recreation have added projects to the budget, but for unknown reasons, they keep being taken out or something else is being put into place. We got a health building. How old is our health building? It's set. So how many years would that be? That's a lot older than the twenty-four. So that means my house, which is probably thirty-five years old, is out of date. But I'm still living there and I have no problem. We have no emergency shelters in this county that will protect our citizens. So we need to build emergency shelters. The roofs here at the complex leak. Just trying to get the maintenance done on all the locations. So we have today, I think emergency management came before us and wants an EOC building, correct? They want building an emergency operations center up to date? That's going to cost us. So with each of these things that are needed, I don't feel like the adoption center is a need. And you also have all these other places and with the school system, taxes will go up. Now, everything is already costing all our citizens. With that, it's just going to mean that we have to go up extremely on taxes to be able to pay the debt. If this is voted for, you will be making a health tool into a major department office, which is not the responsibility of government and adds additional taxes onto the taxpayers. Individuals need to be responsible for their pets. They don't, if they take in a pet, if they bring it to the shelter, they need to be told this is the lifespan of this animal until either you can get it adopted during that period or either that animal is picked up. Because we need stuff for citizens. I believe it's time to put the animal adoption center back under the Health Department and put the Sheriff's Office back into protecting the county, which is the courthouse and the jail. It's your main responsibility. I know you have nine-one-one, but that's not your responsibility either. It's our responsibility to make sure it works. And I cannot support an adoption center. Thank you, Chairman.
The main thing before us today is not approving the adoption center, it's approving the design-build method for soliciting RFPs and seeing what the proposals would be. Is that correct? I will support that. I would like for the minutes to note the final blurb that's on our screen here under the background purpose of interest, where it says the sheriff's goal is to have a budget well under the estimated seven million dollars, just to draw emphasis to that, because that's certainly something I think we would all share, is to do, if we're going to do it, to do it as cost-effectively as possible. Right now, we don't know what we're looking at and we won't know that until we go out and see what the RFQs are.
All right. Over the last few months, I've had an opportunity to ride around a large part of the state. And I actually have listened to county representatives actually discuss and move forward with building actually a new facility for animal protection. So I think the latest one is Burke County, I believe. And it's, so I know it is, it's, I don't want to say it's a trend, but it is something that's being looked at. Now, I could probably sit here and make a list of about fifteen things, if I wanted a short list, of things that Brunswick County would like to have, you know? And the amount of money that would go into that is just phenomenal. But we do have a capital plan. And I agree with Commissioner Williams. We're just going out and looking to see what's out there, what a cost associated with something that could be customized for Brunswick County. I would agree with going out and looking and seeing if there is something that could be designed that would be adaptable to Brunswick County. I also think that, you know, in the future, you know, whenever we start talking about construction of buildings, you know, we don't have to put a facade on the outside that mirrors our courthouse. We can put a facade on the outside that is a substantially hurricane-rated building that does exactly for the purpose of the building. It allows for operation within the building in a safe environment and without looking real, real pretty. And I think that's what we need to start looking at down the road. Not spending so much on facade, but spend on what the actual base of the building is. And so that's, I'm in agreement to moving forward with the opportunity to look and see what a cost associated with this would be.
Thank you, everybody. I've heard all of it. There are a lot of points that Commissioner Sykes brought up that I absolutely agree with. Brunswick County, we're the fastest-growing county in the state. That gives us a lot of growing pains. We just went through a budget retreat, which we just finished up a couple of hours ago. Not even, an hour and a half ago. And we heard from twenty-five different departments. And each department has needs because of the growth. We can't possibly give everybody everything they want because our tax rate would I don't even want to venture to guess what it would go up to. There are positions that we need because of the growth. There are build, obviously, everybody has space issues. We can't go out and build twenty new buildings. That just can't happen. But I do understand, again, like I said earlier, I've had coffee with the sheriff on numerous mornings. And he's kind of given me the idea of what it is he really wants to do with this. This is not to build the Taj Mahal animal place that the guy came and presented to us a little over a year ago. I'm going to ask Steve, Steve, did we not put aside money for this?
There is, the project is in your capital improvement plan.
Right, okay. So at that time, I guess we said, let's look into it. I will also agree, I'm willing to spend some money and let's see what we need, not what we want.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So I'll spend some money having somebody come in and give us an estimate. I mean, I don't even want to hear about that, oh, drive-through and do this and drop this off and all these other luxuries that that man presented to us. Want what we need. So I will accept. Anybody have anything else they want to add?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, just to tell the board, the standard RFQ process for design-build is the county publishes an RFQ and says, we're looking for someone to design and construct as part of a team. Now, normally, what would happen is you engage with the designer on a project manager level, then agree on a design and begin designing. Then it comes to the board for funding of construction. If the board is going to want options to construct, that's not technically part of the normal process and you would need to engage with the Sheriff's Department on that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
My hope is that they will be the entire time, they'll be interfacing.
Of course.
Yes.
Of course.
Right. I believe that will. Well, I need a motion, one way or the other.
I move that we approve the design-build delivery method for the Animal Protective Services Adoption Center project and also that the final bullet under the background and purpose of interest be included in the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye, aye, opposed.
Okay, that would be nay.
No, whichever way. You said aye, you said say aye.
We got it.
All right. It appears to be four to one to move forward. Thank you, everybody. Let's see, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, time for some board appointments. Let's see, let me get just a little bit organized, I got papers everywhere. All right. Brunswick Big District Three Appointment. I have a request for the consideration of the appointment of Randy Moffett to the Brunswick Big Board as the District Three Appointment.
I move that we accept Randy Moffett.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on. Another board appointment, Parks and Rec District One. Request the board consider appointments to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Do we, Madam Clerk, do we have a name for this?
Yes.
Yes, that is Commissioner Thompson's appointee.
Yes.
Haley Burgess, is that who that is?
Haley Burgess is coming off.
Coming off, that's.
Yes, sir.
And
Finch is who?
Finch is who I provided you with, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Finch, Norma Finch, Nora Finch?
Nora Finch is the name putting forward?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. Another board appointment, Shiloh Planning Board ETJ Position. At the request of the Town of Shiloh Board of Alderman, consider approval of a Shiloh ETJ appointment of Amanda Dunn to the Planning Board. We'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into this, do we do anything to advertise for other people in the ETJ to know how to apply for these? Because, I don't know, I kind of have a problem with us just rubber-stamping the town's appointees when we're the voice of the people who live in the ETJ. Do we do anything to, I don't know anything about this particular person, I'm okay with them, but just in general, I would like to see us start finding a way to generate some other applicants so that we don't always have to rubber stamp the choice of the people inside the town boundaries when we represent those outside.
I don't disagree with you. We do not generally know about the vacancies until the towns notify us and they usually submit their recommendation to the clerk at the same time. We certainly could advertise, it would obviously create a longer vacancy than your current process. But if it's the board's wish for us to do so, I believe we can.
This particular one, this Amanda Dunn, I have no idea who she is. I wouldn't know her if she was sitting here.
Same.
And it's, and it's my district. So I would like to have some input, as Frank said, not just rubber stamp. I have no idea who this person is.
Yeah, well, when I went through the ETJ thing and found out that the cities, you know, I just, when I became a commissioner and we were getting these requests from the towns, I just assumed that was the process, the procedure. Well, then, when I read the state statute, it's not. It's our job as the commissioner to appoint somebody in that position. So I guess it's up to each of us to get out and ask somebody to be on the town's planning board. And so if that is your desire, then I would say hold off on voting on this.
Anybody opposed to that?
I would, I would throw out a suggestion that administration gets with all the towns that have ETJs and discuss a process with all them that could be agreed upon. Using the scenario that was just given here, that, you know, it's county area that's and we're appointing the position, but we're appointing a recommendation. And so if you could work out a process, because I think they're going to immediately know that we did not approve their recommendation. So I think some type of discussion needs to be had with all the municipalities that have an ETJ so that we could get some type of process in place, if it's going to change from what it currently is.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't appoint this person. I see. I I see where the, you know, this is a vacancy because someone passed away and I would, you know, I don't want to hamper their planning board's ability to get business done. But at the same time, just moving forward, it's, you know, it feels like we, that nobody else has an opportunity for that input. And I mean, it's, Commissioner Forte, it's your district, so I'll defer.
Yeah, I I would prefer.
Yeah, and I.
Now, now, this one happens to be because somebody passed away on the board. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case.
All right, so this might be different than others, but generally, we know when somebody's term is about to expire and that.
No, sir. No, sir. We don't own the ETJ.
No, we don't know at all. That's my problem. But but in this case, Shiloh knew, not this one because it was a debt, but most of the time, they know somebody's term is gonna expire.
Yeah.
And they start looking for somebody. Whereas it's technically our appointment and we don't know these people at all. I have no idea what this woman's idea is. I I would prefer that we do not make this appointment this evening and we come up with a way to notify these municipalities that have an ETJ that as, when they know, give us at least thirty days. You know, cause most of these appointments expire at the end of June. Give us thirty, forty-five days so we could make an effort to find somebody.
To put the, her application in, just like anybody else.
Right, exactly. I have not seen an application from her.
Mine, I I do know him, so.
Yeah, but, okay, for the sake of expediency, I get it. I I I totally. But for the sake of expediency, they've got work that needs to be done. And they've, they've got a vacancy. They put it forward. We've not changed anything. Can we say?
They have other board members. It's one person, not the entire board.
Well, I'm just saying, what if we said, what if we said, moving forward from here, from now on?
I would rather hold up. She can certainly apply. She could go online and fill out the form and send it to us, as could others, and let let us make that determinant. I don't know anything about her. I don't know if she's lived here a week or what, thirty years?
Sure.
So I
We have, and and I don't know if we've been through the vetting process we go through with our own board appointments on taxes and things like that.
I'm sure that we would. Chairman Thompson, something to bring, I'm sorry, Chairman Forte, something to bring to your is that we, the county rolls out in June every year. That does not say that the municipalities are under the same, same one time a year, everybody rolls out.
Okay, I agree. It may not be June thirtieth, but there's gotta be a time.
Absolutely.
It's it's a one, two, three, four-year appointment.
Absolutely.
They they know in advance. Give us thirty, forty-five days for us to look for somebody or advertise and see if we can get a couple of names to choose from.
Understood.
And um before we decide on this, looking at the next two agenda items, the south, Southeast Brunswick Sanitary District, that one is also due to someone passing away. And I don't know if it's the same protocol or if we're supposed to approve theirs. But then the next one is Sunset Beach.
That's an elected official in that position. So I'm not sure, the sanitary district is your vote, that that district votes on them.
But I think we're feeling, we fill the vacancy.
Right.
Like I think we would with H two go, but then, and then the next one from Sunset Beach, Commissioner Thompson said he does know and would support them, so that's.
All right, you're good with that one?
Yeah.
Then I have a problem with it.
But, you know, I mean, I don't know about the, but I guess, you know.
Does anybody know Robert Jarvis?
I've heard that name, but I don't know him.
I mean, we've we have a couple of appointments that are clearly, we we rubber stamped and we probably should not have.
And we don't have an ad uh application for Mr. Jarvis, too.
I don't, I I don't particularly like putting elected officials on these boards. I'm not a fan of that.
He he, that position is.
It's elected, yeah.
No, I get it. That's why I've said, I I realize that one is. But we have others that really kinda shouldn't be there because we just rubber stamped.
So if it's an elected official, why is it not coming from a party nomination to us? Unless this is by partisan.
Nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan.
And like that, for example, if if something had happened at H two go, we would fill a vacancy if there was one there as well. So it's the same principle.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if we would fill H two go since under Leland now, didn't they become a part of?
It's still a separate legal government with its own elections, so that's a whole different quagmire, but.
All right, so let's go back to number three. The Shiloh Planning Board ETJ Position. I would prefer that we hold this off and advertise it if anybody else, and so I could see applications. Let me at least get a basic knowledge of who they are.
I mean, cause we, for our own applications, we make sure they've paid their taxes and things like that. And I think we need to go through that same process with these, so.
Right, I I would prefer that we hold off on that one for at least a month. Give us thirty days and see if we can. Yeah, I I will, I'll make the motion to table that appointment. You may just write that down. All right, uh, all those in favor, yeah, all those, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, number four. Board appointment, Southeast Brunswick Sanitary District is Mr. Robert Jarvis. What do we wanna do with that one?
I like to know what the price is supposed to be for this.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind that either.
Okay, so my understanding, and Mr. Patton can jump in here. With that one being the elected official, we are appointing until the next election.
Yeah, but who?
But that falls to the county to to do that.
So we didn't decide, though. That was the Southeast Brunswick Sanitary District that decided they wanted Jarvis.
What is he elected to?
Well, he's not elected yet. This position is an elected position that we're appointing him to. His bio is in here and he looks qualified, but I don't, I mean, I don't know him, but um, and that's.
So he's taking the place of Mr. McCabe, then?
Mr. McCabe's the director.
Oh, okay.
Do we even know where he's from? Do you have an address, Dan?
Um, I'm looking at, he he lives in Southport Regency Crossing. He's got a pretty lengthy bio in here and he's been a town engineer and public works director, was on a
Actually, he's clearly qualified.
Was on a Capitol Region, yeah, he's, he's um part-time city engineer for the city of Southport, so he's, he's got a background, though.
Regency Crossing is part of the eastern part of St. James, which falls within the sanitary district.
Which is obviously a requirement you have to live within that jurisdiction.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion to put him on?
I'll make a motion to approve that one.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to to have staff uh bring us back with the process for this position, so in case we get some in the future.
Okay. So lastly, we have another board appointment, Sunset Beach Planning Board ETJ Position. Ready?
And I I'll make a motion to to appoint Kevin.
And I'll second with, I would like to request that our staff do the check on, you know, make sure.
Just make sure.
We check.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Darty. Okay, well, is there any other business? Or a discussion on something? Anybody got anything on their mind? The managers or anything you'd like to bring up?
No, sir.
Got nothing?
Well, one thing we didn't talk about at the end of the budget workshop was the tax rate, and I certainly do not favor increasing it.
Yeah, I think, I I, of course, I don't favor.
You just voted for adoption center because once you get to design, you're gonna move forward with the building, so that's even more.
Also voted for the sheriff to bring back the lowest possible cost option.
Plus on the CIP.
They're gonna, it's, it doesn't matter. Anything on the CIP can be put on or taken off at any time.
Including this one still in the future.
Lot of stuff was taken off when I was trying to get Smithfield Park done several times.
Get your bathrooms, none of them.
I think we all.
Glad I got a bathroom.
I I think we all have certain things that we we are in favor of, where others have others, so it's a matter of, I don't think any of us are supporting a tax increase, but it might be inevitable this year. So many needs in Brunswick County.
Took her ten years to get a bathroom.
Any uh, any other things, somebody, anyone wanna bring anything else up before I?
Make a motion to adjourn if everybody's good.
I'll second.
Motion, second. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.